All right, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is five o'clock. A couple of quick things. Well, first, we need approval of the board reading agenda. I want to just to see it.
To move.
All this in favor?
I am.
Upstanding. Okay. I'm going to move into public discussion, but I just want to make a couple of quick comments. We have a new trustee with us this evening and we'll go around and talk to everyone, but anyway, it's good. And we have a new library director here with us this evening. So our table has changed a little bit, so we're excited about that. But with that said, do we have members of the public who would like to address the board? No, okay, and we're just going to move forward. I don't know if we discussed this evening, we have something about full agenda because Anne has a terrific presentation. Well, maybe this is our moment to go around anyways. What if we go wrong? And I'm going to ask everyone if you could just tell us who you are and a little bit about your interests here, and then we'll each introduce ourselves to you.
Okay. I'm Ellen Fox. Love libraries, reading literacy, and wanted to get involved with the community and felt like getting involved with the library made nothing of that than a volunteer at the bookend for two, two and a half years. So excited to continue working with the library.
I'm Joseph Massa. I think I'm on my third year. Is that right? Third year?
I guess so.
I think so. I have a citizen's interest in the library and love this library. And love what they do here. So that motivated me to be on the board.
I'm Bonnie Boothroyd. I'm a retired educator. I've been on the board for about an year or half. Originally got into education because I love up literacy. So love being a part of an organization that supports that community wide.
Corey Schmargelstein, currently work in web and data science at the university, but past lives worked in libraries, including this one. Yeah, generally just love English language and actually all language that I'm just totally proficient in English. Yeah, joined the board this summer, so rather my career's welcome.
Yep. I'm Tom Rayburn. I'm an emeritus professor at the university from Department of English and American Studies. And I've always loved the library. I brought my children here when they were young and I use it a lot myself. So I'm delighted to be at the heart of it.
Calmia Strong, like Corey and Kelsey, also a new board member this summer. I work as an arts organizer, but I've worked a lot in libraries in the past and want to continue to be involved, especially in this exceptional library we have here.
I'm Claire Matthews. I am a teacher librarian at Lucas and at Twain Elementary School. I've worked in a lot of libraries, about every kind, some way or another. So a lot of library experience, but I missed public libraries and stuff that you can't. I'm sorry, me.
Kelsey, that's interesting.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Patrick Free and I'm a chair. And I'm happy because I also love libraries.
This is a new trustee.
I'm Ann Gannon, just appointed the library director. I've worked here since 2008, first as an information librarian and then in 2013 I started as the manager of the collection services court.
And I'm Robin, and I've been here for a long time, but I'm also the Johnson County representative on the board.
But maybe these are also regular faces, you'll see, I don't know if you know everyone, but as well just give us your name and where you're what department you're in.
Jason Powers, the adult services coordinator.
I'm Angie Belton, ten initial services.
We often have a few staff members here who will help us get through the reports and give us their perspective on different issues that arise. So next we're going to go on to the continued education portion of this. This is such a requirement for us as trustees that we continue to be trained. So this is going to fit their requirement, but also this is a hot topic. They're supposed to be more familiar with.
Yeah, I apologize for my voice. I am allergic to ragweed. It's very high right now.
A bad one will soon.
It's scary right now. Okay, we're good. So I want to talk about intellectual freedom. There's lots of questions around intellectual freedom. It's in the, just the general cultural zeitgeist as a discussion point. And especially when it comes to libraries, about who has access to what? And what can be in a library? And while these are discussions that are happening culturally, we'll also see heightened discussions about this when the state legislature needs to break. If previous years are any indication. And so I wanted to go give you an overview of intellectual freedom at Iowa City Public Library, because it is an intrinsic value here at this library, but also in public libraries in general. And there's a two-sheet overview of what I'm going to put forward to you. But the presentation's just going to go over some highlights. So maybe the first thing we should do is talk about what intellectual freedom is. Public libraries are really a manifestation of an important democratic value, which is intellectual freedom. And so as an American, you have the right to seek and receive information without restriction. And that is the American Library Association definition, which is the right of every individual to both seek and receive information from all points of view without restriction. It's your freedom to read, your freedom to explore ideas and engage with them. It's a right guaranteed by the First Amendment of the Constitution. And as the State Library of Iowa's Trustee Handbook says, that your role is on the library board is to quote, protect and defend intellectual freedom. But it's also a professional value of those of us who do the work here at the library. And how intellectual freedom kind of manifested here at the library. One is through access. So we believe quality information, quality library and information resources should be readily available and accessible to all. So collection is one of the first things that we think of when we think about access. But it also is programming, meeting rooms, meeting spaces. It can be the displays, the community bulletin board. It also can be who can check, didn't get a library card, what they can check out on that card, what they can't check out on that card. And we want, our call to action is really to provide access and expand access as much as possible. The other tenant is privacy. For people to seek and receive information freely, they should be able to do that without scrutiny. And the state recognizes that through Iowa Code in chapter twenty seven or chapter twenty-two point seven, which is the privacy of library records. We, as an institution, work really hard to only collect the information that we need, when we need it, and when we no longer need it, we get rid of it. And we have a privacy policy and a privacy page on our website that goes through every single record that we collect, how long we keep it, and when we get rid of it, and why we keep it. And that's, we created that privacy page on the direction of the board. And so that's the kind of impact that we have as trustees to make us do better. That's around. Intellectual freedom is important. It's a for the, it's a cornerstone of having an informed citizenry. And the State Library Trustee Handbook says, quote, "If people are restricted from obtaining information from all points of view, their ability to be informed citizens is diminished, and thus they cannot exercise self-government." We've been talking, I'm talking about it as a value, as something we aspire to realize as a library. But if we want to be a little bit more practical, it's constitutionally protected. And there are several Supreme Court cases ruling that citizens have a right to give ideas and to receive ideas. The most consequential was Stanley v. Georgia, which is their court martial, the court decision for that. And lots of intellectual freedom cases are how it's being looked by the American Library Association, as well as the federal government and the state government is through that court case. Well, Iowa significantly contributed to the importance of intellectual freedom in public libraries through the Library of Bill of Rights. In 1938, the director of the Des Moines Public Library, Hor Spalding, presented the idea for a library of bill of rights to his board. He was worried about censorship issues going into World War II. He had lived through World War I, and he, as a library director, removed materials from the shelf based on the directive of the community or the directive of the federal and state government. American Library Association was also okay with during World War I removing materials. Just kind of an interesting history of that organization. He was not willing to do that going into World War II. And so he wanted to guarantee, guarantee specific rights to the patrons of the Des Moines Public Library, and it was adopted by the board. A fellow librarian brought it to the next annual conference in 1939, the American Library Association Conference. And it was adopted as the maintenance of the profession. So Iowa is really quite an extraordinary state for intellectual freedom rights. The Library Bill of Rights says that librarians should maintain a diverse collection that meets the needs of the communities they serve. And materials should not be removed because someone disagrees with them. That we should challenge censorship. Work to ensure free expression and free access to ideas. Everyone should be able to use the library. Everyone should have the right to use the meeting room or display spaces regardless of their, of what they're trying to discuss or show. And privacy and confidentiality need to be protected for library use. But there are often challenges to intellectual freedom. I want to say before I get into the challenges, that intellectual freedom challenges can come from any group or any individual, regardless of where they sit on the political spectrum. We, they come from on a variety of topics. And because our society is complex, diverse, people feel passionate about the issues that are important to them. And those passions can be opposing even in a specific community. So I think we often talk about certain types of materials, but we see challenges from across the political spectrum. The most familiar that I think we talk about in the culture. Whoops, we are not idle though.
Press a button.
You need to press a button keeper.
It's a button. It's not the control, is it? They were not moving. Like the, run itself. Is it the TV? Turn it off. Turn it off. Yeah. Yes. And I guess.
So book challenge is usually the one that we talk, or is the most upfront way of like where challenges happen in libraries. And last year, the American Library Association tracked eight hundred and twenty-one attempts to challenge two thousand four hundred and fifty-two unique titles across the country, which is a drop from two thousand twenty-three. One interesting statistic is seventy-two percent of those challenges were initiated by board members, elected officials, board administrators within the institutions. There are other challenges though. Program challenge, which our library has experienced from members of the public in the last couple of years. There's a meeting room use, meeting room use challenge, which is just an attempt to block a specific group from using a meeting room. There's also exhibit displays, community bulletin boards, and internet use challenges. When we're facing challenges, this is why policies are so important, and this is why we review them with you on a regular basis. And policies state the parameters of access and use. And then in those, we say what we're going to do. And then we do what we said we were going to do at policy. We follow the policy. So policy, policy, policy. And we review, as we know, policies every three years, or unless we need to, we review those soon. Policies that involve intellectual freedom include the collection development policy, programming policy, circulation on library card, your bylaws, so meeting room use, community display use, internet use. It's extensive. There's a long list that we think through. Policies. But the one I want to talk about the most is the collection development. It's up in November for review. The policy provides the mission and purpose of the collection and gives some general guidelines on collection development. And in this policy, we view collection development as the ongoing process of assessing materials available for purchase or licensing and making decisions on their inclusion or on their retention and reflection. Well, this slide touches on a few points in this policy that I think are important. And that we, our collection reflects the general needs and interests of the Iowa City community. We try to offer a wide variety of subjects, views, and formats. And our collection leans more current and includes popular titles and formats, not an archive. But what is the single most important factor for inclusion in our collection is basically use. Patron interest. If the books are used, they're on the shelf. We'll buy more of them. Materials by the authors, we'll buy more materials on that topic if it's really popular. We take these things into consideration, repurchasing, catalog, and when we read. The reason, we remove a lot of books in this library on a regular basis, and it's because they are not used. So for example, a nonfiction collection will review each book that doesn't circulate three, for three years. We'll look at it and see if it should stay on the shelf or not. What happens when someone disagrees with something we have in our collection? So in many public libraries, there is a single process on handling what is considered a materials challenge. So a patron might question why something is in a specific collection. So why are children's? Or they might want a book or a movie completely removed from the collection. And these complaints often go to the board trustees in a library, or the patron and staff advocate whether the book should stay or go. That is not how we do things at the library according to collection development policy. Our policy states, quote, "The library recognizes that any given item may offend some patrons, but because the library follows acceptable principles of intellectual freedom, it will not remove specific titles solely because individuals or groups may find them objectionable." That's six oh one point two five. So we treat a complaint regarding our collection the same way we would treat any complaint in the library. We do not elevate its status to a special process. When we receive a challenge, like any complaint, we will be respectful and kind. We will thank the patron for their input. And we'll take a look at the item. And then if we decide that it meets our purchasing requirements and criteria, we let the patron know that it did meet the criteria and guidelines. If that doesn't resolve the issue for the patron, they're welcome to come and talk to you. They're wel- welcome to write to you or come to a board meeting, like any other complaint. That has been a longstanding policy at the Iowa City Public Library going back to the nineteen seventies. So let's try and test it and try. It's a standard that other libraries are starting to adopt. So North Liberty has just redone, they reviewed their collection development policy and they're going to follow our, our lead on that. Most importantly, inclusion in our library is not an endorsement of its contents. Whoops, that's, that's it. So final thoughts. One thing about intellectual freedom challenges, if we have them, they can be hard and they can be contentious. But they're eventually resolved in a public, like they do with many other things. And our goal here is to protect the library and to protect the value of intellectual freedom. And how we respond makes our organization stronger and builds our community's trust in the library. If we have a policy, we tell them, it's just a policy, we follow the policy, that's trust building. Happy to answer questions or have a dialogue about that. Feedback box.
Very clear presentation, but what are some of the books that have been challenged?
We haven't really received a formal challenge, like that someone, I've had some questions about whether or not something should be in a specific collection.
Black soundbowl question.
Well, an example would be maybe some book, we had a couple of TVs in the children's area that that like, I guess an example would have been Justice League. I remember that was one where asking if that should be in the adult collection, but we looked at the ratings and comments in this meeting and thought that it fit the children's collection.
There was a question or some discussion about science books.
Yes.
Books that some people may feel are not really bound to scientific theory, but that we're sharing. Is there a public interest?
So we, should we be, recently had a question about whether or not we should have materials about, specific materials about vaccination. So anti-vaccination books, whether or not it was publicly prudent for us to have that, or if we were providing materials that could potentially harm people. Are, my feeling about having those books is having, is there art of policy now? That they're in the public interest. National and state policy surrounding vaccines are using some of those materials to make decisions and the public should have access to materials that are informing policy.
We've also had questions about the use of some of our meeting rooms, meeting groups, or some of our programming for political alliance, you know, the different political alliances are used on. So the concerns are diverse, concerns that are presented.
You mentioned that the ALA has some data about the number of reconsiderations dropping just a little bit from the previous year. Do we know anything about the Iowa data? Of course, Iowa collect that.
I don't, yeah, I don't know about the state data specifically related to whether that's dropped or not, but it seems the heightened year was twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three for reconsideration.
I guess it'd be a little lower because we did this and it's currently in law. And like there's still, there's current law and a lot of the books have now been removed that had been contested. So Iowa gets it's lower because they've banned.
The school libraries.
And I think it's more, you know, because there wasn't super strict guidance. Different places took the meaning of the law slightly differently and some went a little more broad and some went a little more like letter of the law. But so I have a feeling that some of the places that were contesting or had high contested are numbers of contested items, maybe took a little broader stroke to their following of the law. I mean, that's speculation, but I would guess that we would have fewer because they've already been moved.
So I would appreciate feedback after from people, whether sessions like this are valuable, not at every meeting, occasionally, or if there's topics you'd like us to go more depth with. Again, it's the policy policy aspect, but if we know proactively, we know what our roles are, and we know what the library does. And we, we look at this when we do policy review, but if there's something you want to be informed about before it comes up on the calendar, let me know, let Anne know. Because if you have an interest, probably someone else does too.
It can be beyond policy too, as you mentioned, digital collection pricing. We've just seen some digital collection in people, which is a very depressing topic. But maybe digital media lab offerings, how we're working with the community there, early literacy programming. We too might be in good, on teen services. So if there's other topics, letting those, the more. Have staff come and present?
They did have, I don't know, there kind of for policy tech on board, the, the formal processes were challenging. Does this library run into any of the informal people reshown books on their, their own interacting with displays? Yeah. Unboarded tivels, things like that to try to force.
I think, I think that happened. I mean, one thing that probably happens a lot is people don't check out a book and just don't return it. So there's been a couple of books that we steal this, I mean, it's a steal this book, or the anarchist cookbook is one that is, that never comes back. So those are.
All right. Are we ready to move on? All right. So we next have a budget discussion.
So next one to give a review, the FY twenty-seven request for the operating budget. So we're just at the beginning of the budget season timeline, and included in your packet are additional FY twenty-five end of year reports. So one from the Friends Foundation, just their statement of their financial position. And then the other is the receipts and expenditures by fund, so that of your from that, which is just crucial for a monitor in the non-operating budget, which is the library board control. The last piece that is included here is our capital improvements project request to the city, which is for our HVAC rooftop units. We have eight on the roof. One week has, the smallest one were replaced this past year, which was a heavy burden on the operating budget, where we discussed that. But we have seven other much larger rooftop units that are close to end of life. Two that we have provided significant repairs to. And if anybody knows about HVAC systems, there is a change in the chemicals that can be used for the ones. So the freon, they're moving over a different chemical. So even at some point, we're not going to be able to maintain those units because we will not be able to get the necessary chemicals for that. The city has already, this week consolidated the project to one large project and scheduled it for twenty thirty. So we'll have to talk a little bit about that because there's a couple of units I'm not sure will make it then. And if, I would prefer not to have in seeing replacements because they are specially ordered and specially designed, so specific specifications. They also moved it from the general fund to, to the bonding part of the CIP. I just wanted to give some perspective. The library's HVAC product request, which is now one million dollars in twenty thirty, is only one percent of the entire city's CIP requests for that year, for that twenty thirty year. And if we couple, if I took all of the requests from twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty, coupling the HVAC requests with this year's carpeting CIP project that we have approved, we are point six percent of all departmental requests. So there's a meeting tomorrow to discuss the CIP projects with department heads at two thirty right before the homecoming. Great. So we will talk to them about those statistics.
Do they take into consideration what the cost will be if they wait till twenty thirty?
They did up it a little bit.
Although, yeah, okay. I don't know, it's ever been more expensive. I don't know what the cost of those things will be. Because delaying these sort of programs get more expensive.
And emergency replacements are also more expensive than. These are very large units. We will have to rent either a significantly large crane enclosed down Main Street to put these units on the roof. Or they might have to rent a helicopter. So this isn't a this is a very big project.
Not a emergency overnight.
Right, not through.
Right, it'll affect our operations, our ability to be able to.
Yeah, and some of those units, they, they, they not only cool the building, they pull in the air conditioning. And Yeah, and some of those units, they, they um, they not only cool the building, they pull in the air conditioning, um, and uh, I, I don't, I don't know what it would look like if it broke down, you're unable to fix it, it would takes, I mean, if we're lucky, eight weeks to get the unit onsite, um, and what that would mean for the comfort of the patrons and the building.
Was there a threat mold or building of the earth exchanged also, and so flip for our crunches?
Is, if, I think I've asked this before and I always forget, is ICTL a warming center or cooling center for the city? Like, is it out, the city does, it does consider you uh, like a location in extreme weather.
Yes, in the hottest and the coldest states.
Thankfully, that is, that's conversation.
Anne, can you help us understand if we did have to have an emergency replacement? How is that paid for? Who pays for it? Where does it, where do we access the funds? Where does?
There's a question I'm gonna ask them tomorrow. Um, I know that there's emergency funds, um, that they have for specific types of projects.
Okay.
Um, but if we're putting off several different projects throughout the city, I would imagine that that budget would get strained.
So someone has worked out like what brand, what model, is that what, where are these?
Yeah, we got um, a quote from our uh, HVAC repair to do train models for this, for replacements.
Okay.
Yeah. And so that was our best estimate for a couple of years. We had a little bit of a cushion.
In case, you never know. We're reading with them. You know, policy review. Finance policy.
Right. So initially approached this policy not intending to make any significant changes, this is, um, and I don't think I did, you just are gonna see a lot of red, um. I tried to make changes that clarified some wording uh, to make statements a little bit more active, but not everywhere, I felt the meaning of the sentence changed too much. Um, I outlined the most significant changes in the memo. When uh, the finance director, the pool Davies and the city attorney's office of Liz Craig A-Mac uh, reviewed all of the changes before you.
Questions and comments?
Good, this generally, this, yeah, right. The first year with the updates is coming to, to the final policy and first real that reviewing it, um, I think, yeah, there are some greats. There are the updates in there.
There are no questions or comments, though. We're going to read a motion to revise this policy.
I move that we revise the policy or we adopt this policy as revised. That you.
All those in favor? I mean, they both stained. All right. Just a little longer now, I'm reading here to the staff report.
I just have a few things to add. Uh, we're gonna hold a celebration as an open house style to kick off the public meeting, me as a new director on Wednesday, October twenty-second um, at five thirty in meeting room A. We'll send something out to everybody to.
Please try to celebrate with us.
Be good to have the trustees that day. I'm working with our PR department and Sam, I'm scheduling more formal and informal meetings throughout the community, um, just to introduce myself. And uh, if you get a chance, please go down to the children's room, uh, we've bought new computer stools and they look lovely. Thanking for um, the, for adopting the non-operating budget because you'll see the impact that.
We're full of it. So I didn't even know it, I can't. We can't. Look into your vendor, looking at the old one. Next to the new one.
I'm gonna have to look again. Other comments?
So we've all the department reports, the adult services.
And the community, adult community access services. Questions?
The answer in question, well, oh, seriously.
Um, I did have a, a couple, um, say, cause yeah, once, make sure I understand what I'm saying for the uh, information consultations, um, their repeated asks or could continue to evolve, that that's all the one. So patient, I'd leave a few of them follow up, or.
Yeah, I mean, I know that, uh, it's up to the librarian to decide when that pressure has been sort of resolved and yeah, you can offer that will end up, but sometimes they're just general requests for information at the, or clicks a little sudden. Rarely is it ever, I'm seeking this information and you get there. Right, I think, out of people who are, there are questions, you know, that we get, which, you know, yeah, every night still in two thousand twenty-five. Um, what's it gonna be like today? It's sometimes, it's a, that's the one. So yeah, those are all different questions, um. All of this data, it's dependent on the library need to track that thing. So there's a lot of like, that monthly needs are often the children. Remember, we, we're kind of busy up there, but the level like you have that perfect on it's doing clicks, but sometimes you can do a a twenty-minute teaching somebody how you sculpt or a card. And we just taught them, thank, they answered that, you know, was, so what do you worry? Like, we're seeing a zappy library being like, oh, I told you, I'm pressing the whole on your phone, that'd be a good question. Just, um, depends if I had the clicking or certain, I don't know. And this started out being a report about like the year end, cause that's kind of our chance to send, but they got where there's fresh, so with that, she obviously, you can see, yeah, and it's, if the reference questions, which I part of statistics, I'm also responsible for, for, um, statistics. I don't know. I want great logistics, such board calls, things like that. So I, I don't know, it's able to be like all the aspects of them, this was sort of ours. That may be like, what is that number even? So I probably got a little ahead of our. The, the main takeaway for me was this idea of appreciation riches, uh, these done by temporary hourly staff. Any staff member at the library can answer a reference question, so uh, it started off always important to make sure that a great member knows that they, they parse then whatever they listed for, we're gonna be sure, uh, at least to be reported, so I can go, it's a proper change to the state, so um, it's a good chance to reflect and think like, are you doing right and you do it, it's meeting call, uh, scoring. The directional question is also meaningful, it's just I don't record, or stay, I'm doing, or, that's all there. Uh, which is mostly what they do. It's like a page will have the number in the stats, H is Shelby. The, if you get to that number, it connects out of our friends that are actually um, that usually they'll end up being like, oh, this is a book that I thought it was gonna be, actually, or actually in such that decided they consult and work it to walk it back to the service point.
Um, and yeah, that was, uh, my, my other question was kind of about the page location, um, cause yeah, you mentioned that, uh, you were sharing into the pre-COVID um, fiscal year nineteen, uh, is that closer to this year, closer to the twenty-four, that it was still significantly higher than that, but it's a little bit gap.
They were closer higher for a I didn't, that's right. Um, yeah, twenty-nine, the fiscal year nineteen is like, or Alaska, they've data that I ought to go to, um, but that's also by years, so, and change drastic or uh, one to the even digital resource change needs, then set up some of the things like I can check are relevant and something, so I could the words that are and it's up to, like, the numbers are good to try to figure out, like, yeah, but it's, how many workers do I to allocate to the word? It makes you more, I mean, so, it's a way to I answered your question, if I don't have it, so.
We're kind of here, but there's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your answer. The state, once upon a time, was like, this is a reference question and this is a directional and this is, they no longer ask for directional, or do they still have Italian at all, like?
They don't have us, I don't think they report that.
Okay, yeah.
Just entering that this week, they're due October. I don't think they'd ask that.
Up direction.
Up direction, yeah, they call it up.
As a kept on. Sure. Sure.
But we do so.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Sure.
I think we tried to stop taking that and our staff so much now that because we're like, well, why do we need to report it in order because the state does it? Uh, then staff is like, no, we need.
And then it is good, it could rinse, I'm like, San Antonio color much, it doesn't tell us anything about times then. And that's something I'm always struggling like this, like trying to pass that up, so it's really difficult, it's physically um, to sit and say that it's a fine, our situation for seconds. But that would be the deal, that would be a shame, uh, because uh, the directionals are, could be the batches over there, it's common, but so it's like where's the friend you're, I don't know, it's not like pregnant and teaching somebody easier equipment, that program's hard, and so yeah, really difficult princess, and we can't elaborate, very tough, cowardly. Those are all under switch, let's take care of the future, but thanks. Yeah, she, French.
It's a big customer service nice.
Any other questions?
Anne, I'm essentially chair of the chat. Uh, cause you said people are moving toward it, but you don't prefer it and you have good reasons for not preferring it, but are you developing a system for dealing with chat better since people are moving that way?
Then there, uh, did I say there, Bauer? I.
You did.
They did, we did answer in, um, from last year, uh, it's so there's, there are like recommended words in search chat for, for, and, um, we have something called canned response, that's a little software, so there is some like, they're mostly outlines, so it's sort of like, give a moment while I check on that, to click that. Um, it's pretty though, so all those, so we do have that, uh, we we answer a majority of the chats that are our chats, so that's a, it's usually hard, so so we do have a predefined or server advantage. Plus vibes. Um, cause every time they, you hear the thing, chat, it's like, every timer starts in my mind, it's like, or the end user, I'd see them, you don't, I'm gonna get like, you know how they feel loss of family, or if they got, they're being in care of. Uh, could and they drop a lot, which I think is a lot, it's, um, you get on your phone, it'll pop a folder, roll single job script box. I don't, and clicking or else it's gone, but it's still there, um. It's not a view, but it's in the background almost, um. And so you'll be typing to the, they're not give. So this is me saying, again, it's sort of like, you have to constantly do there, but we're also answering question person, um, from, um. Yeah, very there isn't unfortunately a predefined answer for every random question, there's a, there's a, like, in mind, sometimes you know, something for, I've heard you um, that's kind of the expected uh, time that you answer or ask for, okay. Six seconds, well, the chat, yeah. But maybe the chat, well, this coming forward, right? Yeah, I'll go, like, very well, from my chat, it's sort of, to me, yeah. I often try to steer them more towards like, I feel um, John, to you where to chat. Emails out on your response. Chat's there, uh, but I I still work on months and all the packs. We're not gonna clean.
I think it'll be interesting to see when we do the, the next year, we work with patrons, so getting their feedback if chat is, if nothing more, more open, if you need a robust, more robust service. One kind of a vibe out.
This is a really uninformed question, um. Where does the chat software fit with the overall software that we've just purchased, developed, that we're transferring to?
Uh, totally.
Jason, could you speak up a little bit? Cause it's not picking up your voice.
Uh, it's totally separate uh, from the ILS, so the ILS over on uh, the catalog uh, and the circulation, um, so that depends, but the chat is under separate content, it's a share uh, that handles old incoming emails and adding and chats, governor.
So there, is there any more robust software that handles chats that we should be looking at or?
It's really part of this sort of thing, uh, like a telecommunications kind of software, uh, they, they end up as tickets, so like, um, they keep staffing, ticketing systems, the lockers track the progress of it, but it's really useful for us because we change that every hour, two hours out there, see filling notes for staff to say, I'm still working on this, or here's where I left off and my search, there are all the irises, the presence of, of, and you can see if somebody responded, what the thread looks like in the response, um. And the chats are treated that way as well, so they're live answered, but then there's a in the inbox, basically, it has the, once it's closed, you can see the whole chat, they get a transcript sent to them, they box you. And then we have our, so now how can I get another chat? An hour later, it's me again, a, a person can go back or you go.
So what I'm hearing is that you're satisfied with the software, you have had the issues with chat and not really stopped with, it's really more.
Yeah, honestly, I'd say not explore like what, where else is out there to chat. No. I'm not sure, I'm sure there's many guys. I'll just beg you to. No, there are, you know, fake AI insert, but you can start a chat now, often they'll sell you the product that is AI-driven and or self-driven, where we can put in sort of like an epic hero, and if I didn't say, the most common question, but there's, there's the answer. Somebody starts the question, picked their part, or serving, you know, never chat it, but yet, but we do have it already on our Ask Us page as well, there's epic here, some items, but it gets over. And the chat is also, so if you're on a land feature or a word forget that, and get my answer, or being, so again, ninety percent of those are, and fires are, are cards.
Thank you.
I have a question. Keep going. Give you some.
Anything else on that?
Or the community access service.
Yes, ma'am. Um, I will say tomorrow night is the upcoming parade and we are entry number twenty-six. So look for us downtown with uh, our book cart drill team, the boat bike and the book will be all and the rest of the staff cheering. Any board members want to join us? I still have some fabulous um, ACCC inspired insurance, let's say, ICPL, it's a DC fund, so. ACCC inspired insurance that say ICPL, it's a DC fund, so. Uh, I do have some extra ones, but then board members. And, um. Oakville was off the road. Last Friday and this Monday. And they're pulling back in. Transition line. That one had a recall on it. Like it was almost like as we were coming back in, the transition line broke off to the book mobile. And maintenance, um, got a notification that it was recalled. So thanks to the ILS Police Department that came and blocked traffic because. We were blocking traffic on Burlington. At five or five thirty, six o'clock. Great time. And. So. Our staff were able to coast into a turning lane, which was the main thing. Space the testers of the people that we are driving. Yes. But if it's recalled, then you don't know how to pay for it. Is that how that works? Well, I had a little bit of update on that today too. So, uh, okay. So we don't want to be lucky. Looking for future updates. Um, yeah. So, but it's back on the road. It got fixed very fast. So thanks to the city. Uh, wait, that she passed running.
The development report. Is there anyone covering for development? Questions? And we we have Katie here often, so. But we can answer this month if you want to talk directly. I anticipate she'll be here next month in the month after she's. A regular. Director's report, I just have a couple of quick things to bring up. Um, Anne and I met with other city leaders with the new council candidates. Um, the city council candidates. Couple of days ago. Um, to explain what the library does and just try to get our message out. And we're a little bit different than some of the other departments, but. A lot of people coming into the city government know how. We're a bit unique. We'll see how that election works out. Um, Anne's position is past position is now open and. She will be looking at candidates for that job, which is nice that we can move forward with that since there's a hole in the step. We have a presentation tonight, an ALA presentation that people are seeing. That one of our staff members is giving is also the president of ALA. Sam is speaking. Unfortunately, Sam got called to DC, so she's been, they're going to do it virtually. Um, it will also be recorded for YouTube. So perhaps next month's packet will include the Lefer talk. If you don't see it tonight.
The talk?
Um, and the last thing I had is that next Monday, we have a meeting with the public to talk about. How they'd like to see our services and our facility being used. It'd be wonderful if some trustees could come to that. It's in the evening. I cannot be there on because I'm teaching at that time, but it's at five thirty. I think it's respectful for the community for us to be there, but it's also a chance to hear from the community. And then to tell us how they would like us to refine what we do. So, um, it's valued in being respectful to them, but also to to glean information from them. I mean, I assume you're going to be leaving that session. So. If you are able to come next Monday, it'd be wonderful. There's a few people there. Announcements from members. We have the foundation members first. Does the foundation meet? Do we have any announcements? To share from the foundation? Okay. And then the advocacy working group. Um, I understand there's some update sports.
Are you sorry? Can I back up really quick? Oh, ours foundation. Development report. Is that World Languages Collection just adult fiction or is that also children's fiction? Children, children want to. I was promoting that today. So. Sure that I was not lying. Where our readers used to be, um, perfect. So okay, I've been funding people there. I just want to make sure I wasn't lying. Thank you. Um, absolutely. I don't know closely. We didn't come up with like a formal. Statement. Well, they do. But we want to chat.
We were originally planning to do that and then the city came out, the city council came out with a statement.
Would you explain what you're working on for?
We are, uh. Working on. Trying to figure out how the library might respond and how local community organizations might respond to the closure of. The Iowa State Historical Society branch here at Iowa City. So what we did was each of us contacted various organizations to sort of find out what their. If they had plans, if they had aspirations. Um, and we were planning to write a statement that we would present to the group and get feedback on. Um, however. Before we were able to do that, the city council put out a statement that was not really. Quite the same as what we were thinking. So I did bring copies out for everyone. Want to see it if they haven't seen it already. But basically the city council is urging the state not to close the historical society. And. We have been talking to various organizations about whether or not they would be interested in or able to. Or willing to take on versions of the collection to those things that are. Iowa City and Johnson County specific in the area. So that's a big overview. I don't know. Claire or Komiya has anything that they want to add?
Yes, in my reaching out, all of us are kind of in the same place where we don't want to lose the materials. We don't want them to just be moved to Des Moines and moved to another organization and moved to another organization. Um, I talked to Johnson County Historical Society and they much like us. Want to protect the materials. Don't know how to budget it or where to put them. Um, because we all have to. Also assume future growth and future donations to whatever collection. We would develop. Um, a lot of people are surprised by their timeline. And their lack of transparency is kind of what we are hearing all around, or at least I. Was hearing with what I've been talking about. So we've been talking about maybe as our advocacy. To push for that transparency. On what they're doing and when. Um, we did get, I did get kind of a more. Specific timeline from the state historical society itself, where it's closing doors to the public in December. Materials will not be moved until June. So it. They're starting to come out with a little more of this process, but it's also relying on one staff person to do this. And obviously that staff person is also looking for another job. So, um, like it's. There's some other parts that are really ambiguous and. Uh, we don't. Not really sure where the state library. Falls in this, who's in charge? Anyway, there's a lot of ambiguity about. What's going to happen? Kelsey and I did some investigative work and discovered like there's multiple tiers, the building, the land is owned by the university, the building was there. By the city in some ways, the materials are donations and legally bound to a collection. So there's a lot of different factors. Who are the players exactly? We were just kind of discussing maybe what. Our role would be and we think maybe just speaking for its transparency. Um, and the importance of. The materials. Well, I don't know. We have. We had some mismatch with communicate. I mean, we just have it all ahead. Like again, advocacy is timely. It's really difficult to be timely. We're still working on some details there. And this actually is interesting.
The. What you're mentioning about the timeline, since we last met. There's like a new page on the state historical society website, if you haven't seen it, that lays out a lot more information than what was there. Are you asking the board for any action this evening?
No, I I don't think so.
Are you concerned that?
I'm concerned about putting out a statement that might not be. It, um, the same as what city council has already put out. And I haven't had a chance to talk to anyone else about this at all. So. Um, that's my concern is that I mean, you know, asking for transparency and so on. Isn't inherently conflicting with us and keeping the place. But I don't know that we as a board want to put out anything that might be seen as conflicting was what city council has put out as a statement. In opposition to the closure.
So my response to that is, um, with this letter. Is there any timeline for the state to respond? Because this could be. The end of December. When they read the letter. And the time's passed. So I'm not, I'm not trying to. I'm about to be a catalyst for you to do something. I'm just asking if time is burning. As it goes forward and maybe our only action right now is to witness this, but. Time is passing.
Time is passing, yes. Um, and I think. The letter does not have any statement about when they want a response. They're, the only response would probably be changing their minds by the end of December. So, uh, and I think we're getting pretty uniform when we're talking to community organizations like. Are said that they're interested in saving. You know, keeping things here, but don't know where or how financially they would make that work. Uh, what I'm hearing about the budget for the historical society location is that it is. So much smaller to keep it all where it is than it is for each of these organizations to take on their piece of it.
It's not a large operating budget.
It don't. I mean, it's a roof.
It's the roof of the building. That's the real issue. And then there's this. Legal document from nineteen eighty three. Was that the one where it stated that who owns the land? Cause the university owns the land and then is leasing. The building or is lending the building at.
The land for the building.
Until it's no longer of use. And so that until it's no longer of use piece is the questionable. Yeah, ambiguous piece, I think. We looked and oh, I do have it. The branch update. Um, also, some of the materials are owned by, um, a not for profit. Which were purchased. So everything. You know, before a certain date is owned separately and everything after that date. So, um, anyway, I guess. Pretty complicated. You know, it's not a large operating budget overall. Multiple people with. Uh, interest and so on. Nuance to how this would play out. Like I said, there is an updated on the Iowa State Historical Society website. There's a branch update. Um, we just kind of decided like what would our role be as a public library? And Anne, you, I don't know if you want to say anything about your opinion, but.
Yeah, I had a meeting with the Iowa Urban Public Libraries on Friday. Um, and I asked them to. Discuss what their relationship with archives is. Uh, none of them have archives, even Des Moines says they have like a local history collection, like we have a local history collection. Which is, um. City directories, something like, um. Earbooks, same things that we've been collecting. Uh, they do have a few photograph collections. Um, but it's pretty minimal. And then Ames and Cedar Rapids might have a few objects themselves, but they have museums taking care of them. So they're housed elsewhere. So for tonight. Is that I'm interpreting this as just a wait and see and free to come back and learn? Or my misunderstanding?
I would say that's probably fair. They don't really have a statement assembled to give to you tonight. And I haven't fully read this to see what. I'll admit, I haven't actually read that. We were meeting, I think, while this was being published. Yes, um, our last meeting was on the sixteenth, so we haven't talked about this in our group about what's next steps might be. And if it's just, uh, or if our advocacy is just in response to this letter and some full support. Uh, which could be also. About statement from us on the board.
Do you potentially room there do full support and? That for great clarity.
We were working, I think, under the assumption that it's a done deal. And that we just want to protect the materials, but maybe it's not quite so final.
All right, we will. Back on the agenda for next month, but I know this working group will start to get busy as. Let's say season approaches. So being more likes to get well, their work. Any of us know. Can have four people on a working group. Perhaps you can't all meet together at least.
And it's great where the other ones, you can have one on one conversations with any member of the working group. Is that true? Without being a, we can have a statement.
Or you can share. But you cannot ask for replies from the whole. So you can post, you can post information.
Yeah.
But you can't. Dialogue. They'll reply all.
And yeah, the the training, the.
Never reply all, right? The one takeaway from that training. All right. And to have the right tension. Uh, communications, there are articles attached, any comments? Okay. Um, so then we just have the consent agenda. Um, we need to approve the minutes from the August twenty eighth.
Make mercy over the minute.
Well, we can do the whole thing once. I'm sorry. I'm getting. Thank you. Uh, approved. So we have the August twenty eighth, the September fourth minutes and the disbursements all at once. And one motion that people want to make that motion.
That's right. Make that motion. Me too.
All those in favor? I opposed. Okay, um, the agenda for next month. Let's just take a quick look at that. It's the budget discussion. So it's probably going to involve some reading before you get in here. Bylaws. Does one want bylaws maybe? Sure, we put that up for a month. Can we put it in there? Do you want to have I know members? I mean, I know those you can appoint. Do you want to appoint a bylaws committee? From working group? Oh, from the work. We have some people that be interested in being in a working group to look at the bylaws because this is the board of trustees bylaws. I'm sorry. It's not the staff. So we need a couple of people. Who might be willing to take that on. We already ran a by legal, so they have some. Uh, recommendations. So we know we're going to have to do some changes.
I do have a question about the bylaws. Um, because they specify the time that the meetings will be, but I know at the meeting. Uh, right before the three new people joined in July, we're talking about moving the time and decided not to do it because.
Yeah, I think someone had asked. I don't think I was here with them, but I think someone had asked about that. It isn't the bylaws. Are you encouraging us to?
Needs to be bylaws. It seems like if I think.
That's a great bylaws question for the working. We have a few people because I've always wondered about that too, but it does let the community know when we meet. Um, are there a couple of people that'd be willing to look at the bylaws this month? And also have that we reported in November too. So I think or next month. If this isn't a good month, we do need a few people to work on this though. It's just the right thing for us. They've got one. Do we have two?
What are they? That they're, yeah, I mean, um, are, is it a wholesale? Look at the entire bylaws or is it?
It didn't read through and review, but some of the updates had to do with the change in state laws. And legal also said that plain language would be. Welcome to that policy. Are you willing to work on it? Are you asking because you're willing to read through it?
I'm willing to do.
All right. So we have three. Three people? No, we have two people. I feel like I'm auctioning somehow. Would the two of you be willing to figure out time to meet? Maybe talk to Anne the first time about defining the task and taking a look at the bylaws to bring back. Maybe great if it can be done in October, if it feels like we're rushing you and you need to November, that's okay, but it's a task we need to do. Thank you for digging that on. I know it's not always the most exciting. Um, we're going to have the first quarter stats and financials and we'll have reports from CH. Yeah, Wilson one. What's coming? All right, one. Okay, so that's collections, children's and IT. I didn't think of uh CH just. Okay, um, anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn? You might. Second. Thank you, everyone. Um, again, there's a presentation later this evening.
Uh, sorry, at six, six thirty now.
Six thirty. Six thirty on ALA. Um. So if you want to stay for that, it'd be great. Otherwise it would be available on YouTube after. And there's the meeting on Monday. But shall we make that? Thank you, thank you.